I hereby open the meeting of Springfield Planning Commission, meeting in our capacity as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Rhodes Die.
Present.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
And Commissioner Weber.
Present.
All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. This is the meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the Planning Commission later tonight during our regular session at 7:00 P. M. And before we move to our next agenda item, I'd just like to thank any members of the public who may be trying to join us for this meeting, thank you for your patience and thank you for, yes, bearing with us through these technical difficulties. All right, and next we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the Annexation Code Amendments, Community Involvement Strategy, brought to us by Chelsea Hettman and Haley Campbell.
Evening commissioners, thank you for bearing with us through the technical difficulties. So I'm just going to give a little breakdown about the community involvement strategy for Annexation Development Code Amendments. And Chelsea will fill in any places that I missed and we'll open it up for questions after that. So this is an involvement strategy for development code amendments to the annexation sections of the Springfield Development Code, specifically 5.7.115, which requires a city council public hearing for annexations with an exception in one narrow context. And that context is a single lot parcel adjacent to the city limits and city services and not divisible, not divisible by a partition or subdivision. So when we did the previous code amendments for the Development Code Update Project Phase One, we amended the code to reduce the minimum lot sizes from forty-five hundred and fifty and five thousand square feet down to three thousand square feet on most lots and even smaller for those created through middle housing code amendments. So we're just seeking direction from you and the community about outreach process on whether to continue to allow or expand instances where annexation would require, would not require a public hearing. And then we'll also look at clarifying existing code language to provide a straightforward path toward initiation and review path for annexations. So we're asking for feedback on the tactics in the packet and that's for engagement. In particular, we would propose project information being posted on the project webpage, shared via social media and city newsletters, mail to property owners who may most, who may be most impacted by the potential changes, workshops for interested parties to present information and request feedback, and we'll also prevent to the Springfield Planning Commission and City Council. So with that being said, we would ask the following questions of the commissioners. And they are, are the proposed involvement tactics the best method to achieve the outreach goals given the limited resources? Are there any edits or additions to the key messages in the packet before you? And are there any additional opportunities to involve the community, given the adoption requirements and time constraints? That's a breakdown from the agenda item summary and I'll open it up for Chelsea if she has anything.
Yeah, I think so. The last time we were with you all in December for the Housing Code Involvement Strategy you all talked about, could we include something about measuring how we're doing on outreach and engagement? So we did include that in this involvement strategy just to track how many participants we're getting and just try to see what outreach tactics are more effective or not. And then one change from the pack packet that you all have today was we removed the Governance Committee. It was listed in there. It was used in prior phases of the Development Code Update, but council did not appoint or continue that committee last night, so we're not appointing planning commissioners tonight either. So that's just one change.
We'll open it up for questions or comments.
Well, I for one really appreciate your efforts to give back to the last session and incorporate into this document and to this planning. Yeah, the more information that we have for future decisions is the better. So really thank you for that. Um, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. Um, I'm curious. Do you have already an idea of what, which of the lots that could potentially be affected? I specifically, I really appreciate mailings and postcards to property owners who may be most impacted. If I were a property owner, I would want to know that email. So thank you. But I think my question is, do you have an indication of if most of those are just residences? Or if there's businesses among the mix or are, you know, is there a phone number to call for a real person that owns the property for each of the places that might be affected? I always say that because I know sometimes larger landowners can maybe, things go through a processing center and they're not really involved with that.
Yeah. So I believe from, we were looking and discussing this in the Public Facilities and Services Plan Amendment. Is that correct, Sandy? No, it's.
Waste Water Master Plan.
Waste Water Master Plan. So a draft of our Waste Water Master Plan, we had a number in mind of how many property owners do have septic tanks within the urban growth boundary. It was a little over two hundred if I'm correct. So those would be the property owners that we'd reach out to. Usually when we're getting this information, it's through our regional land information database, which is just like a list of the property owners' addresses, so we wouldn't have their phone numbers. But that's something we can look into.
Just curious about that. And but is it almost all residential or is there any, any commercial or otherwise?
Say mostly residential with maybe a few commercial and industrial.
I mean, there are some agricultural operations that would have some larger properties. And but depending on the scenario of what requires a public hearing, those probably, depending on what the code requirements are, but those larger developmental properties would probably still go through a public hearing process. So it wouldn't change much for them. It's what we're really trying to focus are the already developed properties that don't need to go through that public hearing process. So most of those are going to be residential. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, so. When we're, when we're looking at kind of mailings and social media and those kinds of things, the, the purpose of those communications, or this is kind of how I've been interpreting this is, the purpose is to bring awareness to the topic and then hopefully drive it to either the city website or kind of a landing spot where that's where the information can be gathered. Everybody's getting it kind of from the same source, but all those outreach, you know, efforts are really designed to create awareness of the issue, not necessarily give information, but just say, hey, this is a topic. Here's, here's this, and this is where you go for actual information and to engage. I just wanted to kind of clarify that point because it, it can. If there's multiple avenues of communication, I think that that opens the door for the opportunity for confusion. So that's kind of our, our strategy is use the outreach to kind of drive to a single communication point.
Yes, that's correct.
Perfect.
Our Springfield Organ Speaks website. The, uh, what we did for the Stormwater Code Amendments is we also had the workshop that was recorded. We also had that on our Springfield Organ Speaks website or on our YouTube channel. So publicly easily available and Springfield Organ Speaks is a great avenue for that public comment. We do receive it. We do review it. We get your email or your address if you give a comment on there, so.
And I'll add further to Commissioner Stout. I mean, if you look at Glenwood, there are some various businesses that incorporate a body of one. So that would be the main place where you would find some non-residential properties.
Right. And may I follow up with that? Of course. So my concern and interest was certainly if we're in the heavily trafficked, non, I mean, non-residential area, are we also calling the individual business owners who might be impacted by this? Because sometimes they're a property owner, depending on what's registered in the, you know, in the planning or in the you just, whatever information we have about that, we might miss some communications with some really key people. I think that's the feedback I'm giving is I want to make sure we're not missing communications to the key people. All right, any additional questions or comments? Oh, Commissioner Schmunk.
I think.
Sorry, a little challenged here. So, thank you. So in terms of the tactics that you've listed, so I guess tell us, are you, you're, you're trying to find out how these work, but to your, you have a sense of what's been more productive or works better?
Yes, so I worked on a previous Development Code Update Project for Stormwater that happened or are they, it was just adopted by ordinance in December. So with that, we were really successful with the workshops that we did. We had about twenty or so participants that attended that one. We did two different sessions, one during a lunchtime session and one after work session. We felt that was very productive. I had a few comments that were posted on Springfield Organ Speaks. Those were addressed in the staff report during the adoption process. So, and we're also looking, like we mentioned in here, just a similar process to that. There could be additional processes. It just depends on opportunity, time, what feedback we get during those workshops. Yeah, so that was the most productive.
Okay, well, so in terms of the presentation, so social media, what have you, have you thought about sensationalizing some of this? Because it is, some of this is pretty radical. Am I, is that overstated?
Uh, I do feel like annexation can be a touchy subject, so we, we have reached out to a gentleman who has worked on annexations in the community before and provided public comments on previous annexation code amendments to get his feedback and talk to him about this process and receive his feedback on how he thinks we can best not sensationalize it, I guess you could say, and.
Well, but, okay, but you'll achieve more participation if you sensationalize to some degree. Is that not a fair statement or?
I think it's, it's very clear about the wording of this. We, one of our key messages in here was to say the city of Springfield will continue to annex properties only when the property owners request to be included within the city limits. And the proposed annexation will result in a boundary in which the minimum level of key urban facilities and services can be provided in an orderly, efficient and timely manner. So again, we're trying to say that we're not, the process and the reason for these amendments is not to force anybody to go through the annexation process. We're just trying to receive feedback on these code amendments and see if, if we can offer an option not to require a public hearing in certain incidents, instances. So.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmunk. Any other questions or comments? All right, are we ready for a motion to adopt the involvement strategy? As presented.
And I just take the opportunity to say that presented with the removal and the advisory committee.
Right.
Yes. So it's important note. So if there is a motion that we probably want to change the wording to the, the agenda pack or the involvement strategy as presented in attachment one with recommended staff amendments.
Great. Are you ready to enter a motion?
I am ready to enter.
I would move to approve the order in attachment for the agenda packet for this item recommending City Council's approval of the capital improvement outreach with the changes not stated by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. I will now put the call to the motion for a vote. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes Die?
Aye.
And Chair Salazar?
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously with zero opposed. And all right, and with that, we will adjourn the CCI session and we'll reconvene at 7:00 P. M. for our regular session. Thank you. Read it in on motion.
Not seeing any video.
Commissioner Schmunk, you probably need to change this, the if you're on your iPad, you probably need to change the video that you're looking at to not be speaker because the audio isn't coming from the video feed at this point.
Okay, Christina lost me, so. Did you change my? Well, I can hear, I can hear fine. Why don't you just go ahead and is that?
Yeah.
I'll try, I'll, I'll see if I can change it as we go here.
Yeah, Commissioner Schmunk, if you're joining on the iPad, it's likely a settings issue.
I understand. Okay, thank you. I'll see what I can do. Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Schmunk, you were called for roll call.
Uh, here.
Commissioner Stout?
Here.
Commissioner Weber?
All right, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll now have a pledge of allegiance. Those in attendance will plead their second pledge and those online, please pay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of the minutes from December 5th, 2023. Staff have noted corrections to page two of the minutes under the Housing Code Community Involvement Strategy. In the minutes posted, the first sentence on page two should be corrected to read Haley Campbell slash staff gave a presentation on the community involvement strategy for affordable housing development code amendments, which is proposed to be renamed to talk about income qualified housing. Besides that amendment, are there any other corrections to the minutes as published?
There was one very small typo. Sorry, Jeff. Jeff Pascal's last name, so.
All right. Any other amendments? All right, so we will note the amendments for proposed by staff, both related to spelling names correctly and those and without any further corrections, those minutes will be approved with the noted corrections. All right, next we'll move to business from the audience. This is time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the Planning Commission. If anyone is online and or in the audience. All right, and I don't see anyone online joining us to provide comment, so.
We'll check that there's no waiting. You don't have any alerts really.
Nope.
All right, and we have not noted that there are no members in the waiting room. So we'll move on to our next agenda item for the Capital Improvement Program, and this will be presented to us by Jeff Pascal and Stan Petrov. And.
Hi, Jeff and Sue.
Evening, Commissioner. Stan Petrov, City Engineer, Jeff Pascal, Community Development Director. Just here with the CIP update topic again. This is our little background, third time coming to the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're wanting to hold a public hearing and get feedback from both the commissioners and the public. And then we're hoping to get approval to go to the City Council, which we've already been to once, and we're hoping to go there to get approval from the City Council as well.
Excellent. So just as a reminder, this is the same topic that we, we've looked at in our last two meetings, so it shouldn't come as any surprise. I will now open the public hearing regarding the Capital Improvement Program. Please remember to keep yourself on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom using the reactions feature or press star nine if using your phone. If you're here in person, please fill out our request to speak card. We don't have anyone here in person. Members of the public to provide testimony in person. All right, so we'll now see if there's any, are there any new people in the waiting room nearby testimony? All right. There being no public comments, are there any questions from commissioners for Stan or Jeff on CIP?
Just, I just kind of want to comment. I think you guys did a really great job of presenting this. It's really, really clear and I think that it really laid out pretty well, so thank you for, for all of that. Thanks, our shot boss here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chair.
Yeah, I'm just going to do the same thing as obviously only to me and last week or last month for the first time and both of, both of you guys, but you presented for someone who was from the outside and you know, just it was clear and I mean, I thought we brought me up to speed really fast on a lot of the stuff, so appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. Yes, I'll echo that. Certainly. Thank you for your present, multiple presentations and the clear ways that you've brought really complex projects to us to understand those fully. That's been very helpful. Thank you. And especially the sync, the sequence of how projects happened, I think has been very educational for us. All right. Seeing no other comments or concerns, are there any or questions? Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Uh, I move to approve the order in attachment for the agenda packet for this item, recommending the City Council approve the 2025 through 2029 Capital Improvements Program.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right, Commissioner Buck, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will now call for a vote. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Weber?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Stout?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Oh, I'm sure Schmunk is muted.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
There we go. Yes, yes.
Yep. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes Die?
Aye.
And Chair Salazar?
Aye. All right, the motion passes unanimously, seven in favor and zero opposed. Thank you, Darren Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll now hear business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports on council action since our meeting last month?
I had a report.
Oh, yes.
Yourself. I had a report from dinner second, so I can read that now. Yeah. So there are four public hearings regarding land use topics yesterday. The first was a request for Metroplanted diagram amendment and zone change of 4.9 acres of land, which is owned by Peace Health, North Gateway and area of Springfield. Apple proposes to build a future rehabilitation hospital. No action was required and council made no, no further action. The next land use oriented topic was three annexations that were proposed as ordinances. All three were adopted and last was a motion to authorize the city manager to purchase 1.1 acres for development of land for low income housing. These city funds, the purchase via an intergovernmental agreements with Lang County using ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and the motion also passed.
Thank you. All right, any other reports on council action? Okay, next we'll move to the next item of business for, from the Planning Commission is the election of Planning Commissioners Officers, Planning Commission Officers and Committee Liaisons. So we have several, we have all of our, our positions that will be up for election. Chair, Vice Chair, Council Liaison, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee Liaison and Community Development Advisory Committee Liaison. So I will note that historically we'll take nominations for each position one at a time. I will note that historically we aren't bound by any rules or anything, but historically it has been helpful to for the vice chair to step into the chair role in the next year after serving as vice chair. I think that having served as vice chair and going into the chair role, it was helpful to kind of see that, that role in action. So I think that that is I think it's a good, good practice, but certainly we can move in a different direction if we go twos and then so when we make our nominations for vice chair, also imagine that person as a future chair as well. All right, so with that, we will move to our first position, which is the vacant position of chair. Do we have any nominations for the office of chair?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Isaac Rhodes Die from the position of chair for the upcoming session.
All right. We have one nomination. Do we have any other, other nominations? All right. All right, and I definitely agree. You beat me to it. And if we only have one person nominated for the role, we do not have to have a, a vote, so we will consider Vice Chair Rhodes Die elected as chair by consensus. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair Die. Rhodes Die. All right, next is the and you can also self nominate. I will note that as well. So if you're, if there's a position that you're particularly interested in, feel free to, to say so. All right, next is the position of vice chair. Do we have any nominations? Anyone who's feeling particularly called?
Hold on, I'll nominate to Commissioner Buck.
All right. Glad to do you guys.
I'd be happy to accept.
Right. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, then with no further nominations, we'll consider Commissioner Buck, now Vice Chair Buck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, and next is our position of council liaison. Again, this is a position that is mainly a liaison to our, the liaison from council. In this case, that's Counselor Doyle, who is our liaison from, from the council. And this is a chance to as the two of you feel up to your own schedule or as you feel called, you could connect about any and brief council on any matters that come before us that will be coming, any recommendations that we're sending to council. It's helpful to brief Counselor Doyle on those items so that she can then brief the rest of, of the council on our recommendations, where those come from. And additionally, if there's any items that are particularly, we got a lot of citizen feedback on, it's helpful for council to know that. Yeah.
Just, just to note, it was helpful for me to kind of get some direction when I was in that role. There's a, there's a line between directing their attention to what's on the public record and, you know, you can't cross over into X party. So you want to make sure that when you're in that role, that you're not going outside of what's, you know, available to the public. So that might look like, hey, want to bring your attention to this topic? This was discussed. There was a lot of you know, differing opinions, as noted during this meeting, those kinds of things. All fine, what you can't do is you can't interject what's not on public. And so that's, that's just a, a, something that Christina pointed out when I was talking to her with going into the role and I think it's just want to point out that point border.
No, I think that's excellent point. Yeah, and especially if, if there's an item that comes before us, we're getting a lot of divided feedback, especially from the public. That's something helpful to, to pass along to to the council so they can be able to. That's something helpful to, to pass along to um uh to the council so they can be aware of that. Um, all right, um any uh nominations or self nominations for council liaison?
You interested in one?
I'd be open to that position.
Excellent, I think you'd be great at it.
Nominate uh, Mr. Spout?
Any other nominations for council liaison? All right, then by seeing no other nominations by uh consensus, uh congratulations Commissioner Stout on being council liaison, thank you. And next is bicycle pedestrian advisory committee liaison. Not sure who has been serving in that role most recently.
It, it has been myself, the, the, the difficulty was that committee had a lot of difficulty in actually meeting because of timing and changes and all sorts of things and um so unfortunately I wasn't really able to attend. Um, so, so their emails would have seen their struggles. So and, and I was on that before you, and one of the challenges I had is unlike with other meetings where you can catch a recording. That one doesn't have, didn't have that option.
Yeah.
So it, timing and, and availability and accesses is tough for feedback.
All right, well, but there is um, I'm knowing that it's uh maybe a little more difficult to, to connect with that committee. Um, I think there certainly is a lot of um very interesting um work that they're working on. Certainly a lot of corridor improvements that are happening um in the pipeline, so um it'd be a very um engaging uh position, I think, to be in. Any, any interest or nominations?
I'll nominate myself, uh I was recently on the community development advisory committee. Uh, I was that liaison and I was also on that, so I'm working with that, so I'd love to jump into the bicycle world if that's all right.
All right, any other nominations? All right, seeing no other nominations, uh by consensus, Commissioner Thompson will be elected to the uh bicycle pedestrian advisory committee liaison role. Congratulations. All right, and finally, our uh final position is community, community development advisory committee liaison. Uh, Commissioner Thompson, that's the role you were most recently in, would you like to speak to that at all?
Yeah, it was a really interesting role, um it was primarily focused on affordable housing uh initiatives and topics like that, so I learned a lot about uh. Gosh, I'm blanking, like um HUD, HUD, specifically HUD related um initiatives, so it's a great learning experience to learn. About that and actually have influence in a lot of the roles, I would say, in the planning commission are kind of similar. We would make recommendations, uh one was for, you know, planting trees and affordable housing complex, stuff like that. Uh, so I found it pretty rewarding and, and fun, so I'd recommend it to anybody who wants to continue in that world.
That's a um, a position that I'd like to nominate myself for, so that's uh kind of the professional world that I, I work in. I think this is a particularly good year for me to, to serve in that position. Um, in my professional work, I don't, um, my organization doesn't have any um. Future conflicts of interest in, in, in terms of uh plans to apply for these uh funds, so I think my uh. Um, certainly it, I, it's a role that I'm interested in, I'm interested in that work in general, and I think that my uh insight could be helpful and experience.
It'd be great.
All right, any other nominations besides myself? All right, strange to declare myself uh by consensus, but seeing no other nominations. Uh, I will be filling in the community development advisory committee liaison role um for the next year, so. All right, congratulations everyone, we've got a great team. Um, yes, I think we've got great leadership uh for the next year and thank you for stepping up everyone.
Agreed.
Excellent, are there any other business from the planning commission? All right, I'll, I'll just say that um, yeah, I've uh sir, I served as vice chair for um a half year. I've now been in the role of chair for a year and a half, um interim for a half year and now in this. Um, this past year has been, um, it's been great, we've had a lot of um interesting topics come before us, but um thank you especially to. Um, yeah, all the commission members, um all the commissioners as well as all the staff who've um been a great support to the leadership team. So thanks for the last year and a half, it's been, been a great ride. And any business from development and public?
The only thing I have um is that uh we will work on technology before your next meeting. And um we will not meet again in January. Uh, we will meet in February, but I'm not sure if it will be the first week or the third week or both. Um, so stay tuned, but at least you have the rest of the month off. Um, and we'll see you in February.
All right, I will now adjourn the planning commission regular meeting, thank you everyone, and thanks for bearing with us through the next difficulties.
Well served.